Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Monday, February 5th. The time is 4:30, and I call this meeting of the Finance Committee of the Frederick County School Board to order. I see we have an agenda before us. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right. The motion has been seconded and moved and seconded in to approve the agenda. So that motion carries, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hummer for new business.
Make sure we get a vote.
Oh.
Any discussion and then a vote.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, no, it's okay. It's okay.
Seeing as how we only had three here.
You're fine.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say nay or yea.
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 And any opposed? And the motion carries. And now, Dr. Hummer, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. So we have a couple items that we would like to review with you all today. First is, we wanted to open the meeting up and discuss the questions that you all had sent forward. Please continue to do that. And we also want to make sure that we provide the responses to you in this format in case there's any additional questions that you have. So we will continue to do that. If there's any other questions that you have after this, please continue to reach out. We're more than happy to answer those questions in a timely fashion. Then we are going to break this budget down a little bit further. Today, we are going to talk about the additional staffing, the staffing standards, as well as the Dal J. Howard Hybrid Night Program. We have some special guests here in the audience who are very excited to share their experiences, as well as why is this program is going to be so important for our students and creating pathways for and opportunities for our kids. So really excited about sharing that. And then lastly, we wanted to provide you with a little background on the operating fund savings and how that's defined, what that savings looks like, and then what we were going to be taking a look at purchasing some items this year. We just want to make sure that you all are aware of that. So with that being said, I'm now going to hand it over to Ms. Anderson, and we will go from there. Thank you.
All right. Welcome to your second Finance Committee meeting. So we'll start off with answering questions that we received from you from our last meeting. The first of which, you can see a line graph here, which compares our proposed teacher scale for next year, including the $5,000 supplemental pay compared to Loudon County Public Schools' teacher salary scale this year. So there you can see that we still have some gaps. But again, it's not our goal to be exactly like Loudon. We just want to be able to compete. The second question that we received is, what are the years of service that most teachers leave us? Our most recent data shows us that of the teachers that leave us, just over a third are in that zero to five years of experience. And we did look back over three years, and that three-year average is about a third within that group that leave us. The third question, what is the additional cost to include principals and assistant principals in the 6.6% salary initiative? Well, that cost would be $250,000. What we've also included here is how our principal and assistant principal pay scales compare to our traditional Virginia 30-mile radius. So you can see that we don't fare very well at the start of the scale, but fare very well at the maximum point on the scale. This is an average comparison. I will note that when you look at Frederick compared to Winchester City's principal and assistant principal scale, they are higher than us at both the minimum and the maximum. What is the cost to be better than Loudon beginning at the 15-year mark? So we don't know what Loudon plans to do with their teacher scale for next year. So to try to put some shape around this question, we compared our scale, the proposed scale, of what it would take for us to offer a teacher salary similar to Loudon from 15 to 35 years' experience. And that would come at an additional cost of $17.7 million. In conversations with Loudon, we did discover that they do put a cap on experience for new teachers coming in. So for example, if a 20-year teacher leaves us and goes to Loudon, and they're not a hard-to-fill position, they will place them on their scale at 15 years' experience. So when you can consider that cap, that additional cost is reduced to $11.2 million for us. Okay. And here is our traditional teacher salary comparison to the 30-mile average. This is updated. It was presented as part of Dr. Hummer's presentation, but it's updated because the General Assembly took action mid-year this year, and we had some school divisions who provided an additional salary increase mid-year this year. So we wanted to update this comparison based on that new information. This chart was also part of Dr. Hummer's presentation. Again, it's updated for the same reason that we just talked about on the previous slide. And you can see that as the result of those mid-year adjustments, as well as an adjustment to Warren County's start, that we now tie with Falcere in terms of our starting salary this year, second to last. If there are no questions, additional questions about this part of the presentation, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Frakely for the staffing standards.
I am very curious to learn, as we mentioned earlier during our pre-meeting, that 37% that we're losing, I really am looking forward to trying to drill down and find out where are we losing them to. Are we losing them all to Loudon? Are we losing them to other industry? I think that'll be a very telling data point.
I, Madam Chairman, I have a question, if I may. Can you go back to the slide where it has the comparative salaries, please, for what we're proposing versus what Loudon has? Yeah. Sorry, I'm old. So this is what we're proposing, and then to, I guess, achieve exactly what Loudon's offering, as was questioned in the last meeting, we also mentioned, too, to look at what the price of gas is versus, you know, to factor in that and see how close we can get without having the same exact number. But do you know what I'm trying to say? Maybe?
Kind of a cost of living.
You're looking at more of like...
Yeah. Basically, it costs X amount of dollars per week, per month, per year for gas. It costs an X amount of dollars per month, per week, per year for the upkeep of your car, plus you factor in the time it takes to get to and from the position versus if you're living in Frederick County and going to a Frederick County school, you have a lot less to worry about in those regards.
So you're looking for a cost to commute?
Yes.
Okay.
To see how close we can get based on that cost of commute and see how much lower that $17.7 million is.
Mr. Bale, I think we interpreted that question that you asked. I just want to be clear as to why we didn't answer that here. I think we took it that you wanted to see what Loudon does with their salaries in FY25, where we land in FY25, then get that cost and use that as a selling point when they go to recruit.
Okay.
So that's why you don't see it there. But if you'd like for us to get that now, we can certainly do that.
I'd love to see it. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Click into my slide? Thanks. Good afternoon. So staffing standards. This was adopted by the board previous to you all in December of 2023, the intention to utilize staffing standards. So you'll see here a variety of reasons and why we're doing this. Basically, it is to put some structure around our staffing standards, staffing in our buildings, why we need to do that, to develop a formula-based tool. It helps with finance, obviously. But not only that, it is an attractive recruiting and retention tool. They are efficient and transparent, formula-based budgeting, but they are also very much a recruiting and retention tool. These standards will allow us the ability to showcase the division's commitment to staffing at levels that best support kids and our staff. By utilizing these standards, current and prospective employees will know they are supported by an equitable, best-practice-based decision-making tool designed to proactively reduce burden and burnout by staffing at adequate levels. We know that transparency is key, which this is an extremely transparent tool. You know, everybody can see and do the math behind it. The staffing standards ensure that everyone is on the same page with a clear understanding and vision around how decisions are made. It is important to note that the implementation of the staffing standards will absolutely not happen overnight. But with a strategic plan and vision clearly in place, taking the next measured step gets easier and more efficient when using this tool to make decisions in the best interest of our kids. And I will highlight bullet point number four. This is absolutely not designed to remove staff. So making that very clear. And in being good stewards of our resources, it is rather to reallocate resources accordingly. Do you mind click? I don't have the clicker. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Okay. So some more points on the staffing standards. Why? We are, like I said, this was adopted in December of 2023. So we did not have regulation at the time, or the regulation at the time was not nearly as specific. And so in utilizing these staffing standards, we changed that to make it much more specific in terms of how we are going to show our math, show our work behind it, I guess you could say. So we know that subjectivity can influence staffing decisions. We also know that there will be exceptions to meet the very unique needs of our amazing kids. However, with these standards comes an increase in equity, not only at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, but division-wide as well, helping to ensure that the needs of all of our students are successfully met. And another significant benefit of adopting the proposing staffing standards, as we have, also includes our ability to make decisions more quickly. And so this really increases our ability to be more effective and efficient in a much quicker timeframe. Having these standards in place will allow us to make critical staffing decisions earlier in the year, giving building leadership the ability to strategically plan more effectively. Any questions? Okay. So just taking a look at where the focus efforts are here to enhance support for all learners and staff, certainly elementary and secondary. The research about instructional benefits of small class sizes is not new. It's overwhelmingly clear. So in truly listening to the needs of our staff, we know that we need to do what we can to protect planning time for our teachers. So that is a goal, to cap class sizes in K-12 and protect that planning time. And then when we talk about special education, ELL, and gifted, at one of the recent Instruction Committee meetings, I say recent now, it's probably before the holidays, we heard Dr. Angelo say that we have 14,000 different learners that we are responsible for educating. I mean, just saying that out loud sounds overwhelming, and that is a tall order. But taking a student-first approach by implementing these standards allows us the ability to provide enhanced differentiated support for our students, especially those with unique needs. Oh, sorry. No, you're good. Last bullet, to support staff, obviously, right? To establish standards that meet the needs of the building and establish support staff to help alleviate the burden on classroom teachers that we all know exists. And so, you know, when we talk about things like, Charando is an example that Dr. Hummer often uses, where we have almost 300 more students in Charando, at Charando, but the custodian, the custodial staff did not grow to keep pace with the number of students. And so we have, you know, a high school with the same amount of custodial staff of, you know, where we have other buildings with 300 students less than that. So this will help us put into place the triggers that will then kick off and say, yep, we've reached that number. We know Charando needs more custodial staff. Let's deploy that, those resources. Can I answer any questions? Dr. Hummer, you want to add anything?
No. I think you did a great job there, Mrs. Frakely. I think one of the biggest pieces with this tool is to make sure that we are truly meeting the needs of our students and removing the subjectivity of how we are staffing our schools. And one of the things, I don't want to steal Dr. Angelo's thunder here, but one of the things that we wanted to overly emphasize is to take a look where we are across all of our schools in regards to how many staff we have per student, and then be able to reallocate those positions before we start requesting more positions. This is one of the things we spoke about, as Mrs. Frakely mentioned with our previous board, where this is not a, I would like to brand this and say this is something that I came up with and patented, but a lot of larger divisions utilize this because as you get more students, as you get more schools, you want to make sure that you have appropriate oversight of positions so that we're not just adding random positions throughout our school division, we're being better stewards of our dollars. This would be a good tool for us moving forward. I think the other piece, too, that I want to highlight is, and you mentioned this, is this is going to take time. This is not something that's going to happen overnight. This is something we have to keep a close eye on because as our numbers increase, as the needs of our students increase, we want to make sure that we continue to stay on top of this so we can provide our principals with what they need. So we will continue to have conversations in future budget conversations in regards to, this is the phase we're focusing on now, and this is where we would like to go. Because at the end of the day, the only way that we can move forward with this is if it gets funded. So we want to make sure that we can continue to work through these items here. One last thing I do want to mention, and we've been talking a lot about what's happening down in Richmond in regards to the General Assembly. There's a lot of bills out there right now, and I'm sure Mrs. Jordan can report out on this, that is trying to address the SOQ and how we're staffing our schools. They have not updated that in a very long time, and that's how we receive funding. And then when they meet our SOQ and we need additional positions, that comes from the locality. So that's where a lot of these funds are going to be coming from. So until the state makes those adjustments, a lot of the dollars will be coming from the locality. So we need to make sure that we're continuously pursuing that at the state level as well.
Since this is a change in the way that business had been done here for several years in the, as far as staffing goes, just, Dr. Hummer, we talked about it briefly, but can you kind of bring, tell me, tell the story that you told me about how this went over? Because oftentimes, things of these, of this nature are approached by those who have to implement it and go, oh, shoot, you're trying to take away my people. So can you talk to us about how it went over with your staff?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we spent a lot of time putting this together. We talked with principals. We talked with staff. And initially, and there's a principal in the room, they could probably share as well, that there were probably some eyebrow raises in regards to what we were trying to do. So I think it did take some time to process. I think it took some time to really get to the crux of why we were doing this. It wasn't about removing positions. It wasn't about doing something behind the scenes. It was about, we need to make sure that we're being good stewards of our position so that we can continue to meet the needs of our students and get the staff we need in our buildings. So then, after we had numerous conversations, and once I think we got a better understanding of this process, there was definitely a, you saw it in the shoulders of the principals that there was some relief there. Now, it's never good losing positions, and that's something that we want to make sure that all of our principals understand, where this year, you might have not needed those four positions, but next year, because of enrollment, you might need five positions. So it is going to be something that's going to be a structured-type reallocation and making sure that, A, we're not moving staff, hopefully, if we have to, we might have to do that, but moving those vacancies around. Because as we've talked about, we're always going to have vacancies every year. So we want to make sure that we're moving FTEs rather than moving actual people, but if it gets to that point, we might have to move people as well. That is my dream, to hopefully have all of our positions filled, where we're actually moving people and not vacancies. So it might be a double-edged sword if something like that happened. So overall, it went very well. We continue to have folks reach out if they have any questions so we can work through these things. But we definitely had a lot of conversations that have led to a deeper understanding.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, just not to get too deep into the weeds, I just had a quick question about protect planning time. What is the number of planning periods that are currently held by teachers in Frederick County?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, if I can take that one, Mrs. Frakely. So all of our teachers, we, there is a state code that dictates how staff receive their planning time, and they get their planning time. However, at each of our levels, we have specific things that are happening that prevent them from actually getting that planning time during that time. So for example, in elementary, those teachers get, is it 40 minutes roughly? 40, 45 minutes? And for all of us that have either been in an elementary school or know what our teachers do, it takes about two to three minutes to walk the kid down, walk the kids down to their elective or to wherever there is they're going. You always have little Johnny who needs help tie in his shoes, or little Susie who doesn't want to go. Like, there's always something going on. And by the time all that's said and done, you have 20 minutes. Who plans in 20 minutes? So that's all they're getting for that given day. And even during lunchtime, sometimes these teachers do not have an unencumbered lunch because there's something going on with a student, or there's an IEP meeting, or there's talking to a parent on the phone. So also, too, we want to make sure that we are clearly defining what planning is. Planning is not a break for teachers. It's a time for them to get collected, get their items together, planning, take care of other things. So we want to make sure that we're not advocating for break time. There should be time that they get breaks. And I know you're not saying that, but I want to make sure that we're clear on that. But we want to make sure that we build out our staffing to make sure that our teachers are getting the planning time that has been designated for them. Because the other aspect to this, too, it's something we're currently looking into, focusing on elementary, is recess time. You know, that's an additional 15, 20 minutes, and our teachers are out there watching those students. So is there something else that we can do creatively, again, to give them that time? Because when you look at middle school, they're getting 65 minutes. Same thing with high school. So they're getting more time because that's how long the block is, whereas elementary, it's shorter time. So that's why we want to make sure that we are protecting that planning time so we're not removing them, because that's what teachers need, is that additional time to get those things done.
Well, I would also argue that elementary would need additional time because they're planning for multiple subjects.
Mm-hmm.
Versus middle school is, I mean, I'm planning for one subject. You know, I teach the same thing eight, six blocks where I am, but an elementary teacher is teaching five different subject matter, and they would arguably need even more time than a middle school or high school teacher. So something to consider.
Yes, sir. We would agree.
All right. If there are no further questions right now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Angelo.
Thank you, Ms. Frakely. Madam Chair, members of the Finance Committee, Dr. Hummer, I just want to share with you how we came about, you know, from previous budget presentations, that we're asking for 25 additional FTEs. Those aren't all teachers. But 25 additional FTEs, they are all building-level, classroom-based staff. Just want to talk to you about how that came to be. So my team and I, the elementary instructional director, as well as the director of Special Instructional Services and her assistant, met with all 12 of the elementary schools. And our secondary instructional director, Dr. Myers, as well as, again, Dr. Sandy and Mrs. Niedrick, who are our director and assistant director, respectively, of Special Instructional Services, met with all of the secondary schools, all of the middle and high schools, to talk about staffing. Now, I will say, we did not meet with Mr. Thompson at Dal J. or with Dr. Reeves at Dal J. Howard, because those are specialized programs that have very unique needs. And so those are more individualized conversations, and in some cases, the staffing levels we have there are 100% about compliance and not about, really, opportunities for movement. So through that process, we went through every single teacher and every single instructional assistant they have in terms of the positions, not the person, but just the positions by level. At the elementary level, where when you see general education, we're really talking about grade-level teachers, so a fourth-grade teacher, a fifth-grade teacher, kindergarten teacher, so forth. At the secondary level, we're really talking about content teachers. So when we look at general ed, we're talking about an English teacher, a social studies teacher. And then, of course, special education teachers and EL teachers, career and technical education teachers, and then our instructional assistants. So we went through each and every FTE and looked at the current enrollment. We looked at the projected enrollment for next year, and we were able to go through and identify several positions that we were able to capture through that process. In other words, positions that we currently have allocated, that the principals were saying, we won't need that position next year because our, for example, large fifth-grade class is moving up to middle school, so we won't need five teachers in fifth grade, we'll only need four. I will say that as we've looked at those FTEs, to my memory, and don't hold me to this, all of those are vacant or planned to be vacant. So we know, in some cases, teachers have already said they're going to retire, or teachers are moving to a different district already, or their spouse is getting transferred or whatever. And so some of that is that, others is, we simply didn't fill the position with a full-time position this year, and so there's a long-term sub in the position, so that is technically a vacancy currently. So as we were looking at those positions, we were able to capture several. And so the 25 positions that we're asking for are actually out of a total of 42 that were requested, but we were able to capture enough positions to bring that number down to 25. You'll see in the far-right column under net requests, special education and English-language learners were asking for seven FTEs there, and you see compliance next to both of those. That's because those positions are absolutely required for us to remain in compliance. Those aren't standards of quality positions, which are recommendations. They are compliance positions because of the law dictates that we have to have a certain ratio based on certain populations. The other, the other positions are not necessarily compliance positions, but they're definitely positions of practicality. For example, we may have a rising fifth-grade class that is looking to have 31 students in it if we don't get that position. Can they teach 31 students in a fifth-grade classroom? Sure, they can. But should they teach 31 students in a fifth-grade classroom? No, they should not. So those types of things come into play when we're talking about requesting the FTEs. And I feel very confident, and I feel very confident in my conversation with Dr. Hummer as I met with him, that we are not asking for anything that is not an absolute positive need in our schools. The seven compliance positions are really kind of non-negotiable positions. We need those, absolutely have to have those. The other positions are a practical need. And if we don't have those positions, it will be challenging to schedule kids in electives. We won't be able to keep elective numbers down. If you look at the four CTE positions we're asking for, those are, those do have a cap of 20, but we're able to bump that up if we just simply write a letter to VDOE. If we don't get the positions we're asking for, we'll have to do that. Those kinds of things are happening. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have with regard to the FTEs that we've requested, but this is where we are. I do want to also note, there were positions that principals said, at the elementary level in particular, they would like to have an additional position, but they don't have the classroom space. So that's just something for you to note, that we will have fourth and fifth-grade classes that are higher than K-3, because K-3 has the class size reduction grant, and we can't go over a certain number there. I know, for example, at Bass Hoover, we're anticipating fourth and fifth-grade classrooms in the high 20s. And Mr. Thomas did say, I would love to have an additional teacher, but I don't have a classroom to put them in. So that's just something to tuck away, if you think about.
Dr. Angelo, I want to make sure I heard you correctly with your, the CTE teachers that you used as an example. You said if we don't receive the four, if you don't receive the four that you've requested, then we have to get an exemption from VDOE?
Right. So what happens is, you know, you get to a point where you're capping out space, and you get, you're growing students, and they have to, they get electives, they have to go somewhere. If we don't get to positions, what happens is every elective that we have gets bumped up. So if a student ends up, if we need to end up pushing our cap of 20 in CTE above 20, we can do that. We just have to send a letter to VDOE explaining, this is why we're doing this, and this is the justification for that bump up. We've done that in the past. It's, we'd rather not have 24 students in a lab-type setting because of safety, but it does happen from time to time.
So possible, but not something we want? That's not a good teaching environment?
Not something that we want.
Learning environment?
Exactly.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Quick question. With regards to the CTE, I'm assuming this doesn't include the proposal of the new night program?
That's correct.
The number of teachers that...
That's correct. It does not include that. It does not include that proposal. All right. Thank you. Now, I would like to invite, uh, Mr. Thompson from Dal J Howard.
I mean, I think two of those CTE positions are the criminal justice and the nursing position, to which the nursing position, we're also, uh, governed by the Board of Nursing, which caps it at ten.
Okay.
I don't know if we can write the board of, I'd have to look into that.
That would be really good to include, I think, in that, in that slide, uh, for the Board of Supervisors, because I know having that extra information on those four CTE positions, especially what you just said, Mr. Anderson, is that's the nursing board, or whatever the prod, the nursing board governs? Yeah, that would be really good to include, I think.
Absolutely. We could do that.
Okay. So, uh, thank you for, sorry. Yep. Thank you for having me. I'm going to introduce a few folks that I have here with me this evening. Ms. Rogelcheck, she's a parent of, of one of the, uh, kids in one of our programs, and then Ms. Ricketts, one of our teachers in, in our, uh, our, uh, Evening Remote Learning Program. So, first, I'll talk a little bit about the funding, uh, that we're proposing for the hybrid night program and what it'll go for. Extra periods, that's really a reallocation, uh, again, going with kind of the same theme that, uh, Dr. Hummer spoke about, reallocating some positions that we currently have, and then additional pay for principal, assistant principal, and lead teacher. We essentially would be going to covering four nights a week within our, uh, within our group of, uh, admin team, and so the compensation for that. And then, uh, SOR, SRO coverage for the night hours while we have night school, and a, a little bit of funding in there for additional instructional material. Sorry, let me go back. You, at the top, you see the dollar figure there, forty-six, uh, eight on this. Why offer a night program? So, talking a little bit about this. So, we looked and we're saying, and we said last year, we had sixty-six kids that didn't graduate with their cohort. And like Dr. Hummer has shared with you in the past, that keeps them up every night, likewise for me. Sixty-six is sixty-six too many. And so, you know, one of my, uh, goals is that every one of those kids that the traditional path is not for them, is that we capture them, and we save them, and we give them an opportunity to, to earn their, or earn their credentials, whether it's a GED or, or a diploma, um, at Dal J Howard. A night school provides an at, an op- an opportunity for at-risk students to complete their high school experience. And then a few, a, a few key statistics. High school dropouts are eight times more likely to be in jail, so let's catch them here, and let's get them, get them what they need to, to be successful in, in life. And then students with a high school diploma earn thirty-three percent more than dropouts. So, if we can get the education so that they have a fighting chance, by all means, that's what, what we want to do. Who does it, uh, help? So, these are some different things that we have, uh, seen for kids that we've had to put something together, uh, for, is they just need a different option. The traditional high school experience isn't for them, right? They don't like the large environment, they want that smaller environment, they're someone that just wants to come to school, do their thing, they don't want all that social atmosphere or that social aspect of a, a large high school. To support their present family, we have kids, uh, that have young kids themselves, and they need to help care for their kids during the day, so that they need a different option when maybe perhaps a relative or somebody is in the home to care for their young child. New mothers, folks that just need a different option for a s- short period of time. Homebound isn't enough, so they need to do something a little, little different. Students with significant mental health concerns, that need a smaller environment, something, uh, a little less stressful for them. Uh, students with specific substance abuse concerns, these are, this is another, uh, population that this, this program would capture. Let's talk a little bit about different issues, creative solutions. So, we went to work this year. We saw, uh, a need for students to have something different. So, I worked with, uh, Finance, Ms. Camery, and we identified that these students were all behind, so that they would qualify, that we could use some ESSER support dollars to put together a program for this year. But that funding is sun- sunsetting. So, inset Ms. Ricketts, uh, had a conversation with Ms. Ricketts, and she agreed, uh, to provide a remote learning support in the evening. So, she does, uh, a class every evening from four to five, and then seven to, to eight. Every student, uh, logs on to a Google Meet, and then from that, they all share their screen, and she pr- provides targeted interventions for those kids. I'm not going to steal her thoughts, I'm going to let her talk a little bit more about that experience, and then I'll come back up and talk a little bit about the vision. Before I turn it over to her, do you have any questions?
Are there a certain number of hours you're talking about, in the stuff online, and then also the night? And it sounds like it's not quite as elongated as going to school during the day. So, are there a certain number of hours that these students will have to complete? Therefore, it'll take longer for them to complete it?
Sure. That's a good question. So, there's limited funding available, uh, and so why, I would like it to be a longer, more robust program, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, about my vision for it. Right now, what we've pieced together for this year is these two-hour-long sections, and it's a hybrid program to where they do some online learning, and then they check in with Ms. Ricketts, and Ms. Ricketts helps get them through any areas that they're struggling with. Then next year, similarly, it'll be a hybrid program. It'll, instead of being, they do one hour in-person now, then one hour on their own, uh, sometimes more on their own. Next year, it would be an hour and a half in-person, so, again, extending that opportunity a little bit longer. Certainly, it needs to be longer than that. I don't think anybody would argue with that, but we, we've got to, we've got to start with what we can.
So, you're targeting basically the, the subject areas that that particular student is struggling with?
So, we, for a night school, we'll target whatever that student needs to get across the finish line of a diploma.
Okay.
And so, while, uh, while we say it's an hour and a half, i- is what we're projecting at right now, we'll figure it out. One of the things we always do at Dal J, we figure it out, whatever that kid needs, we're going to do what they need to, to get them across the finish line.
So, so if I may, these are really great question, questions, especially yours, Mrs. Martin, I appreciate that. And we, we have to keep in mind that each of our students have individually unique needs, where one student might need English, where another student might need three subjects. We don't know, but this is a good starting point for us to meet the needs of those students, of where they're at, and I'm sure, I'm probably stealing your, you probably have some examples of this, but we want to make sure that we're creating these opportunities so that these students don't fall through the cracks, and we're able to create that opportunity for them, so that they can complete and get across the finish line. And quite honestly, if it does take them more, that's fine, just as long as they graduate and get that diploma, that's what we're working towards. The on-time graduation rate, yes, that's something that we have to monitor and keep an eye on, but for me, I want to make sure that that student graduates, graduates, and then we can continue to work on that on-time graduation for our students as well.
Ms. Ricketts?
Want to read? Hello, everyone. My name is Lynn Ricketts, and I've been working hand-in-hand with Mr. Thompson, um, to implement a solid foundation of expectations for students whose parents have requested them to go virtual. I hold meetings, like we have said already, every Monday through Thursday from four to five PM and seven to eight PM. Each student, these, these meetings, we call Apex Support Meetings. Um, these students are expected to remain on the Google Meet for the entire hour. Um, during this hour, I help the students comprehend subject material that might be difficult for them. I also unlock quizzes and tests, or help them through quizzes and tests that they might need help on. Most importantly, I am constantly monitoring students' progress in the classes to ensure that they do not fall behind. If you notice, if I notice that a student is not completing their, um, assignments on time, I do what we call a progress meeting, is I go to the administration team at Dal J, um, and I tell them, "We need to set up a meeting with the guardians of these students," and we bring them in, and we kind of create and implement an action plan on how to get them caught up to where they need to be. Excuse me. So, although we've had only a few progress meetings of kids where we've had to kind of reel them back in and say, "All right, we need to get back on track," the positives so far, in my eyes, have outweighed the progress meetings. So, one student that I have is what we'll call Student A. She has completed and passed all of her Apex classes, allowing her to graduate early this year. She has recently emailed me, expressing gratitude for the Dal J Howard program. She has now been able to graduate early and apply for a much-needed job in the real world. She has said, she also emailed me, it was a funny little email, so I'm just gonna, um, saying that it was a ten-out-of-ten program that she recommended. And then another student is a prime example of why this option works. She is constantly emailing me to unlock testing quizzes and for extra subject material and help that she might need. She went from being behind in a year of English and math classes, so now she's being able to double up and ask me for the extra support that she needs in an English eleven and twelve, and she's also enrolled in geometry and AFTA, and what she is passing all of those classes plus some. And then I also have a student whose mother is here today, um, about a testimony on how much this has helped her, but before we get there, um, I also have another student who is a new mother. She currently had a baby and was struggling with the hustle and bustle of school on a day-to-day basis, so this has been a huge opportunity for her to say, you know, "School is very important, and I want to graduate, but I also, and I want to graduate for my, you know, my newborn, but this is here for me, and I'm going to do this because I have this option here for me." So, I have one student, like I said, whose mother is here. I'm going to pass the mic over to her as another, um, testimony on how great this program is. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one question, as, as you're walking, oh, please, come, come on, come forward. Um, just while you were walking, I have just a, a quick question to clarify. Uh, thank you for explaining the Apex. So, the, they do the Apex, which is the virtual learning, online classes, and they're there to provide that support, that they, that tutoring and teaching support that they would need?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, they can do the, the online classes at any time, and then to get unlocked to certain different levels, then you can do that?
Or if, um, so they're struggling with a certain subject or unit, so like, they have certain units through the Apex. If they're struggling with unit three or four, I can, um, provide them the material, help them through that subject to progress them onto unit five, six, seven, eight. Yeah, so they pretty much work by themselves during the day on their Apex support. There's a monitoring of progress on how far they are in the class to make sure they stay on track, um, and then, so they can email me, "Hey, I did not do well on this quiz. Can you help me through it? Can you unlock it for me? I'm ready to take my unit test," which I monitor that, you know, they're doing their unit tests.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi. Um, my name's Melody Rogelcheck. Um...
Oh, no, you're fine. I get nervous in front of the mic, too. It's okay. You're among friends.
Like, playing bear, um... So, when I think about, like, the multiple school districts my daughter has attended, and, uh, compare the different approaches of each administration, Dal J Howard stands out as the most adaptive and the most under-recognized. We have sat with school, medical teams, in countless offices, waiting rooms, to address her challenges, both in and out of school. We have followed safety plans, updated 504 plans for consecutive years, and worked with teachers to get her caught up after each hospitalization. In addition to that, we moved several times in order to provide her with a fresh start in one capacity or another. We kept pursuing the next step to the best of our ability, but the behaviors kept getting more serious and more disruptive to the environment surrounding Hannah. I was horrified when I first drove into Dal J Howard parking lot. There's a guard tower and an exercise yard. Then I thought that it would scare Hannah into quickly working her way back to Shandon. Instead, through a series of her infractions, Mrs. Johnson discovered that Hannah had more impediments to learning in a social situation than we were aware of. They were supervising Hannah through some of her outbursts, but I had to pick her up more than once. By the time that we reached the stage that, that Apex support was recommended, our hope had long been extinguished, and our despair was having a physical effect on all of us. One meeting in particular had an impact upon my outlook for my daughter. She had gotten in trouble again, and Principal Thomas had to be a part of the meeting. Thompson. Thompson, right?
Thompson.
Thompson, sorry. I have it written down as Thompson. I'm nervous. I was so dejected, and I asked him in a couple of different ways, because I was going to pin down. She's done so much in her school career. When is the system just going to say, "No more? No more?" I really was anticipating them giving up on her. Just like when he was standing up here, he articulated what seemed to be an endless list of backup plans. I experienced hope again. It's evident that this team sees her and other kids like her, the kids who don't see themselves getting to their own futures. He's willing to meet them where they are and guide them out. Our situation evolved into Hannah being constant supervision to protect her from her impulses. She was in the four PM class, um, but she wasn't participating. It's, there are other students in there, Hannah's very, very shy in one way. Mrs. Ricketts gave up her own family time during the holidays to meet with her individually. How did we get to be so blessed? How do you ever repay someone else's dedication to your child? Hannah was finally able to be vulnerable and advocate for herself when she needed help with Mrs. Ricketts. She has recently started to work on her geometry without my nagging. She's passing several classes for the first time in years. This program has helped give confidence to our child, who sees three AP honor siblings and doesn't understand why she's so stupid. How do you quantify the value of providing a lifeline to a child that has lost hope?
I can't follow that. That's impossible to follow. Thank you. So, what I will share with you a little bit is what our vision is for the future. And I could sit up here and I could tell you a plan, um, and, and we have plans, right? We want to expand the programming, we want to, but at the, at the end of the day, we want to meet whatever the student presents us. Whatever the student needs, we want to be able to meet what that student needs. So, essentially, right now, what I will say, the need that I see is an expanded night program, an ability to offer a robust night program with many offerings, but this is our start. So, this is our start to try to start to meet the kids' needs that we have now, and to be able to continue what we've started, uh, with ESSER dollars at this point. What questions do you have, or that I can answer for you?
Have you put a price tag on this?
What's that?
Have you put a price tag on this?
Yes, it's forty-six, eight.
Just start talking about the starting point or the total for the whole program?
Total for the whole program.
So, starting for right now is forty-six, eight. An expanded program, it would really be, how large do we want to expand it to, to decide what that price would be? Do we want to add CTE offerings, or how many CTE offerings? Because I think that's important, too, to get kids a, a skill that they can, and a credential that they can, uh, utilize to, to earn money and to start off a career.
Okay, that seems reasonable. Have you, have you projected how many extra people this might require?
Yes. So, that's, that's the all-in cost for staffing in terms of reallocation of some, uh, savings that, that we could achieve, uh, through our current staffing, and then additional, uh, compensation for the folks that will be staying later, the SRO funds, and the additional instructional materials. Essentially, now, starting small, uh, but building the structure in place to be able to expand. So, we're talking, like, seven extra periods right now is what we're looking at, uh, to be able to achieve this for roughly fifty kids, to have fifty spots.
And those seven extra periods, would those be in-person, or would they be virtual, like, with Mrs. Ricketts?
Yeah. So, what we're looking at, and what I'm proposing is hybrid, uh, so it would be some in-person, some remote learning.
Sure. Okay. Because I'm thinking space-wise at Dal J, like, it would, at what point do you think you would reach capacity?
Well, this would be, being that this is a night program, we would...
That's true. It's after-hours, so that would be no issue. So, to expand this...
Very much so.
Would be a...
I mean, realistically, I mean, it's just, you know, depends how many kids you're going to put in a class versus how many class spaces we have.
Madam Chair, if I may, though, thank you again for those questions. One of the things that Mr. Thompson and I have, have spoke about many times is not expanding the night program, but expanding the day program. We are losing students, and all three of our high school principals will agree with us on this, that there are students that are just not making it during the school day... day, and we want to create more opportunities for them, so expanding is something that we are going to be continuously looking at at Dal J, so that we can catch these students sooner, so that we can graduate them on time and provide them those opportunities. Because a large majority of the students that get placed in Mr. Thompson's program are students that are out of suspension, or they're at the end, so we want to be able to catch those students earlier, to say that this student, it is appropriate for them to go to this setting, so that they can graduate and provide them the supports they need, and we'll just have to look at what that expansion's gonna be. So, Ms. Martin, that's a great question, that's something that Mr. Thompson has put together, and we will continue to have these conversations, because there is gonna be a price tag to it, but it's definitely a price tag that's going to be for creating opportunities for students, so.
And I could add, the current demand is just under 100 kids, is the request that we have, and we have 30 spots, so, that's, you know, that's tough. Very similar to our CTE programs, in terms of requests, which is what the spots that we have.
Gotcha.
I'm gonna, if there's no further questions, I'm gonna turn it back over to Ms. Camery.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if it's a positive or negative to come after anything with Dal J Howard, you always feel like a letdown when it goes to someone else, so thank you, Ben, for letting them see that it's a letdown when it comes back to me. Sorry about that, but then, hopefully, you'll stay on a high with what's happening at Dal J Howard, that we can get through this next couple of slides. So, we thought, this is not really directly affecting the budget, but we thought this is something we could pull into a finance committee meeting, just to explain some terminology that you'll hear in the future, and just have some understanding. So, what we thought we would do today is talk about turnover savings versus vacancy savings, because you'll hear that pretty often throughout the year. So, we've defined turnover savings as when a position is vacant, and the person who left it was paid more or less than the person they hired to come into that position, more or less. So, it's turnover, meaning what that difference is, so, I'm gonna give an example here, so a person of position's vacated, someone is hired to take that vacated position, and they're paid either higher or lower than the person who vacated it. Vacancy savings are when there's a position that doesn't have a person in the position over several months, so the vacancy money that we would've been paying a teacher, or custodian, or an IA, is left there, that sits there, because we don't have someone in the position for a couple of months. And an example here is, we have Linda, who's a second-grade teacher and has 10 years' experience, and her annual salary is $58,700. Linda decides to take a new job at FEMA on December the 1st. Ann is hired by FCPS to start on January the 1st, and has zero years' experience, and is paid $50,000. So, the difference between Linda and Ann's salary is called turnover savings, and that one month between December, when Linda left, and January, when Ann started, is called vacancy savings. So, I'll pause just to make sure that there's any questions?
Where do these savings go? Like, what kind of...
Good question, Mrs. Martin, and we're gonna get to that one, because I've could read your mind and knew you were gonna ask that. So, we are gonna get to that. So, vacancy savings are something that happens here all the time, and in other school divisions, it's not something unusual just to Frederick County schools. We do budget for vacancy savings, it's when our number becomes higher than what we budgeted, is when we start looking to spend those dollars on other items. The money is usually used to purchase things that are needed, whether it was something that was asked for last year and wasn't funded, or something that came up unexpectedly this year. And then, you can see here, here's some of the things we usually have, it's not uncommon for departments or schools to ask for certain things, or need additional funding. Here's some examples, unexpected situations arise, emergency purchases, especially in facilities, some safety issues that come to our attention, pricing increase, something that was budgeted for maybe in July, and we didn't buy it till October, and the pricing went up, or just things, as I said, that were requested in prior years that were not funded. So, Mrs. Martin, this is to your question, is then, several times a year, we look at that, so we project that, we watch it, and when it gets to a certain level, then we start bringing forward requests of how to spend that vacancy savings during the year. Now, these are only savings in the current budget year, so they're only happening in one year. Right now, that vacancy savings, we looked at from July 1st up to the end of December, is over $1 million, because you think about 2,500 positions, people come and they go, they stay vacant, the turnover, all that is netted together, and we're about 1.3 right now. Here's a list of what we'd like to use some of that money for at this point in time. We have, so we'll just go quickly down through the list of this money that we've identified, we'd like to take that vacancy savings and pour it into these items. So, we'd like to take the money and paint the inside of Jameswood Middle School, that is in dire need of being painted inside, as well as their columns on the outside, that the paint has chipped away and the bare wood is showing. We would like to do the sidewalk repairs in the front, and this is a picture of some of the cracking that's happening at Jameswood Middle School. There's also a stage repair of some sort for the Fine Arts at Jameswood High School that was cut during the renovation, that we'd like to put back in, that's needed. Technology needs a van to carry equipment, so this is not a van to travel, and this is a work van that they use to take equipment to the different schools to do their job. We'd like to put a fire alarm at facilities, we need one out there. We also have some fencing at Gainesboro and Greenwood Mill, that we have some students eloping, so we need to kind of put a fence back there around the playground area. One of the, I think it was Gainesboro, where the fencing is like a bobbard fence, that our kids, if they try to get under, could get cut, so we want to put a fencing to protect our kids and keep them there on our school property. We have some intruder locks that we'd also like to purchase. There's also weapons detection, portable detection system, that we'd like to use at sporting events as a pilot program, to see how that works, or if that's something we want to pursue more in-depth, as well as ID badges and some fobs for safety and security. There's also talk about some property, possibly a buying, that would also go into this number as well, if that should pan out. And with that, I'll pause, if there's any questions.
Well, it kind of sounds, now, this may sound silly, but it kind of sounds like a petty cash fund.
It is, funds that are budgeted, if you remember, we budget for positions, right?
Right, and what I'm saying is, it's taken out and putting in this little pot, and all these things are wonderful, and I don't see anything wrong with spending the money for that, but I'm just kind of curious as to why it's not going back into some kind of fund to regenerate teacher raises.
The reason for that is teacher raises are recurring dollars, this would be one-time dollars.
I knew you were gonna say that.
I know, you could read my mind, I thought you could, but that would be why we would do it this way.
Okay.
With that being said, then I'll turn it back over to Dr. Hummer.
All right, so, a quick recap, we discussed and broke down the budget. Before that, we went over all the questions that you had, and there was a couple additional questions that were asked today, and if there's other ones, please make sure you pass those along, we're more than happy to answer those in a timely fashion. We also went over the additional staffing standard positions, as well as the Dal J Howard program, and thank you to Mr. Thompson and his team for coming out, really appreciate that, as well as having a testimonial from a parent, we really appreciate them coming. And then, we just went through the operating funds defined, and you all asked some really great questions there, and as you continue to look at that, if there's other questions, please, please let me know. I do want to mention, Mrs. Camery talked about the weapons detection, the mobile units, we are gonna be presenting that in a Buildings and Grounds meeting coming up in the very near future, and that's something that I would like for the board to make a decision on, if that's something they would like for us to pursue. Doesn't go over the $200,000 cap, but that's a big decision that I want you all to approve, so we'll be pushing that forward, for you to take into consideration, so. Any other questions, we're more than happy to answer.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Hummer, and thank you, team, that was really excellent, really appreciate all the time and work you guys put into that. I know, it's not easy, and it takes up a lot of your day, so thank you. So, seeing that there's no other questions, can I get a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Excellent, and I second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes, the meeting is adjourned at 5:29 p.m.